A little more enthusiasm there.
We'll call it to order, 7:05. We're close to seven.
Or have you been working for 24 hours straight?
Uh, ninety-six.
Huh?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six?
All right, so, we've called it to order. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? We should introduce our new minute taker, whose name I have already forgotten. Aaron. Aaron, thank you.
Yay, Aaron. Aaron. Should we tell Aaron who we are?
I introduced myself early. The candy man over here, you want to introduce yourself to Aaron, Ken?
Hi, Ken McCraddan from Newfane.
Emily Long, Newfane.
Nancy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Introduce yourself to Aaron.
Nancy Dyke Wyndham.
Drew Hazelton from Jamaica.
You're just too busy.
And Bill, you know, and...
Bill Antone Superintendent.
Jerry Dyke from Wyndham and McHaggy from Townsend are public. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Bill, I have a question.
Yes.
These candidatures are too big for meetings, Ken.
Sorry.
Excuse me. You sent that financial questionnaire in the board packet. Do we have to do that?
Not until you create a budget.
Okay. I didn't think so, but I printed it just in case we had to do it, because I would have added it.
When she become operation, will you be responsible for it?
Thank you. All right, we've got nothing. Members of the public, do you have anything you'd like to address the board?
No.
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 I love that. Any correspondence, folks? I don't have anything. All right.
We're on a roll, Joe.
We're on a roll, yeah. We need to get our warning done for our annual meeting. I have a draft of it, it was in the board packet. We'll end up needing a motion to direct me or authorize me to sign this thing.
Well, actually, this warning is just for the two at-large.
This is...oh, I'm sorry.
Your annual meeting is not until April 3rd, so we'll do that at a later date.
Right. I'm still in Leland Gray mode, I'm misreading.
This is the one that has to be in by the 29th, is that right?
This, yes, if your petition...
The petition has to be in by the 29th, yes. So, the polling place is our town meeting day, which is March 6th. It's uniform throughout, right?
Well, so, for this first one, the at-large vote has to occur on town meeting day. It will have to be a separate ballot, because it has to be co-mingled, which is a big burden on our town clerks.
Right.
Unfortunately, we can't do anything different this cycle.
Right.
But going, and we discussed this at length, I think, before, but going forward, it would make a lot of sense that we do the budget vote and any necessary at-large votes, not on town meeting.
Right.
So that you could make it much easier for a co-mingled vote. I think we have a populace that is used to voting not on town meeting for a budget, and we do not have to do it, you know, in February. We could do it at, you know, after town meeting.
Right, we could do it after town meeting.
Exactly.
Which makes a lot of sense for voters and...
But this time, we have to do the at-large vote for the two positions, petitions in by the 29th. Our clerk for your board, who is also the clerk for Jamaica, Pamela Tweedy, is creating a master ballot for all the town clerks, so that we can make it as easy as possible for them, because it is a long night for them. I will make sure that my office supports the town clerks in any way I can. I will make sure I have dinner here for them to bring their co-mingled ballots.
This is very much like when we do a bond vote here, because we always co-mingle...
Yeah, it's very new for me. So, yeah. I just want to make, it's not easy. They've got to run their local town...
Right.
...town meeting, and then they've got to not count these ballots at their thing, but bring them here.
Right, extra staff in two separate places and everything else. So, the hours of this are, it's, we're inserting places and times in both the towns and in the intro paragraph. Are we picking those, or we just hadn't found out from the town clerks what they like yet?
So, yeah, I think we need to go through each town clerk to make sure that we're matching up with when they're going to have their voting available.
Okay.
Yeah, you're not, if I may, you're not going to want to start before nine in town meeting, because that day, we'd be busy prepping for town meeting to begin with. I think traditionally, it's been nine to seven.
It's either nine to seven or 10 to seven, though.
That's, I was going to say, I think it's nine to seven if I go backwards in other warnings, so I was wondering if we were going to insert like nine to seven at this point, or if we still had some follow-up work to do with the various town clerks.
We need to ask town clerks.
We're going to confirm with the town clerks. The most important thing tonight is that the board understands that you guys will be warning for two at-large positions, and that a motion is made to allow the chair to sign the warning once it has been approved by each of the town clerks.
Okay.
How is that going to mess up the one that's already been done for...
It won't, because essentially, you duplicated, but this board is responsible for the two at-large.
Okay, so, Newfane and Brooklines are good for this year.
You're fine.
Can I...
Yeah.
You can answer the second. These are for the two at-large. There are no positions open from, because what are we doing about those positions? Because we have...
So, those positions have to be done at the local...
Because we have the local meeting, so, do we, did we review, I didn't even look at those, did we review, because Newfane has several?
Yeah, we could do that right now. Basically, Newfane has three positions, and we have...
One vacancy.
Two, uh, one vacancy.
One vacancy.
Yeah, one vacancy.
And Jamaica...
And Jamaica has a vacancy.
Because we know that Patty...
Was appointed until this next town meeting.
So, as of right now, we have one local vacancy in Jamaica, and one local vacancy in Newfane, and two at-large.
Correct.
As of this moment, right now.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay. So, we just need to fill in the dates, and we just need to fill in the times and the locations on this vote, and get it signed, and get it published.
Can I say one more thing about the other positions?
Sure.
Like this at-large, Newfane's needs to be, a petition needs to be in by the 29th as well, because we voted Australia about...
For all, all of the positions.
Even for Jamaica?
Well, if you're doing it, if you're doing it at Jamaica for...
They vote off the floor. But that's not an option for us in Newfane, so I just wanted to make sure people who are out there interested in running, they need to take a petition out and fill it out and get it signed for the 29th, by the 29th.
Don't all of these have to be voted...
The first time.
The first time?
Yes.
So, Jamaica's open, oh, Jamaica's open slot will be voted by, from the floor at town meeting rather than, okay. So, no petition in Jamaica, because it's just a one?
When it was first created, they all had to be that way.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. All right, so if you're running in Newfane, get a petition in by the 29th, or if you're running for one of the at-large positions, get a petition in by the 29th. If you're running in Jamaica, let your town know.
Yes.
There you go. Thanks, Joe.
All right. So, we just need a motion to direct me to sign this thing when it's complete, because I think we'll have it done before the next meeting.
That's all I'm doing tomorrow is making sure that I'm tracking down all the town clerks to confirm it, yes. Yeah, we have to have it, because we have to have it 30 to 40 days prior.
And it's March 6th, so...
So, we're not waiting for the next meeting.
No. So, I'll make a motion to have the chair sign the warning for the special meeting for the West River Modified Unified Education District to elect two at-large direct, school director positions.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Further discussion on that? All right, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the chair to sign the warning for the election of the at-large directors for the West River Modified Union Education District. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it.
So, Joe, I'll track you down when that's ready to go.
Okay. I'm pretty easy to find.
You are.
Okay. We have administrative reports from, we have the cabinet report from Bill and his staff, if anyone has any questions on that, or if, Bill, if you want to...
I did have a question. The January 8 meeting with Rebecca Holcomb?
Yeah.
How did that come out?
Well, both Emily and the, so, the WCSU board directed the officers of the WCSU to follow up, in a meeting with Secretary Holcomb, to follow up on the report that was done of a study between Wyndham Southwest Supervisory Union and Wyndham Central Supervisory Union. And two of the three officers were able to attend, one was sick. And so, Emily Long and Rich Warner and myself met with Secretary Holcomb and Donna Russo-Savage, who is legal, I don't know exactly what her title is, but extremely knowledgeable legal advisor for the Agency of Education. And it was a, it was a...
Who, by the way, has also been handling all the governance topics that are going on around the state right now?
It was a really helpful meeting to just kind of follow up on some questions that the board had directed the officers to have about the report. You know, I'll give my impressions, and I'll ask if Emily wants to add to it, but, I mean, essentially, what the secretary let us know is that during the creation of the statewide plan, which is due on June 1st of this year, there are several supervisory unions that are being considered as possibilities for merger of supervisory unions. And Wyndham Central Supervisory Union and Wyndham Southwest are two of those groupings of supervisory unions that are being considered for merger. She said that it would not be a surprise on June 1st that she will be reaching out to supervisory unions that are under consideration for merger and having conversations with them, most likely late March, early April, if they are going to be recommending that that is part of the statewide plan. We had some really good conversations about the need for supervisory unions to have very robust and deep-capacity central offices to deliver on the promise of equity and excellence for students. And it was a really, you know, kind of straightforward conversation about it is the responsibility of the statewide plan to make sure that they are looking statewide and region-wide in creating the structures and systems that can best deliver a world-class education to all of our students. And part of that is looking at supervisory unions that might be in a better position to have a larger catchment of students and be able to provide the services and leadership that are necessary in order to have those outcomes for our students.
Okay.
Emily?
So, I will add to it. This was prompted, if people don't remember, by the French study that happened between the Wyndham Southwest and Wyndham Central's, about the Wyndham Southwest and Wyndham Central Supervisory Union unbeknownst to us until they sort of, it was, it was a study by the Agency of Education, and we didn't know anything about it until they sort of showed up at our central offices, both SUs. And it was quite clear, and Bill will recognize this as well, that they had still not read the report. And I'm not sure how much emphasis that report really will have. I think part of our conversation that we were having with them was to say that we, if Wyndham County, or if two SUs in Wyndham County were being reviewed, just erasing a line between two SUs is not necessarily the best way to go for students or for communities, and that we would hope that they would look at it more broadly. And they assured us that they would be doing that and be actually asking for feedback from all, most especially, I, all the communities, but I thought notably, they made it clear that school boards would have a voice in this if they so chose to have one, which I am certain school boards will, all over the state, choose to have a voice in this, being representatives of their, the elected representatives of their communities. There was one other thing I was going to mention, I've lost track, but I thought it was a very helpful, useful conversation. I felt better when I walked out than when I walked in. You probably did too. I thought so. What was helpful about it? They were very open.
Yeah.
And were willing to answer any questions that we asked them, and very openly and honestly. They had only just completed their 100-day plan, or whatever they've got in, that is in place for the timeline, to bring communities together to, and SUs together to come and share their feedback about what they want to see. I have still haven't seen that, and I'm pretty sure you probably haven't seen that plan yet either, but it is getting, they just finished it, I think, just that week in Montpelier in the agency, and they will be contacting us. We did find out that we would need to go to Montpelier to vary, to, because there are so many school boards that need to be given a slot of time, communities that need to be given time to advocate for what they wish for. So, it'll mean commitment, time commitment on our part, and we need to make sure that we are very clear about what we want as well when we go up there. But I thought it was very productive. Okay. And they seemed very interested in hearing from local voice.
Yeah, I think the clarity was probably the best thing that came out for me, is that no decisions were going to be made in a vacuum, that the, exactly what Emily said, the school board members, the elected officials of the communities, would have an opportunity for consultation. And once it gets published on June 1st, there's a whole nother six-month process of being able to have continued conversations in front of the state board about the statewide plan and how we would all fit into that, so...
Okay.
I think they've got, you know, some thinking on the way forward, but I guess my takeaway was, is that we're definitely part of the conversation.
And I would say that we are to Wyndham Southwest and Wyndham Central, our two quite small supervisory unions, and I think the combination of our two would be like 1,100 students or something.
About 1,600, yeah.
The downside of that would be the area, though, wouldn't it? The numbers make a difference.
Oh, very.
But that would make one supervisory union...
Be very large.
Yeah, pretty large area-wise. Geographically, yes. But not necessarily in size of student population.
And both supervisory unions have gone through the Act 46 process and are going live with larger school districts, so that also plays into the structure.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, no, I mean, that was going to be my highlight, so thanks for asking.
Oh.
Well, on that note, I'd like to point out that, you know, we had the committee of six from the SU, along with...
Wyndham Southwest.
Wyndham Southwest, and that's basically what that report pretty much came from, a lot of that material, from, what was his name that did that, the consultant?
Dan French.
Yep. And I think it would be a nightmare to try and, now that Act 46 has gone through and there's new boards, to say, "Well, you know, we can take Jamaica and put Jamaica in this one, because then, then you're going to, you have to have votes upon votes upon votes, because you have to have a vote to let them out now."
So, I think that when they're talking about supervisory unions, they're not talking about anything to do with school districts.
Right. The districts have, this district now, because there'll be no Jamaica district.
Correct.
Right. So, then there would be Twin Valley, this group.
Yeah, we would have, we currently have, we currently are structured to have five separate school districts as of July 1st, 2019.
In Wyndham Central.
In Wyndham Central, and they are structured to have three school districts as of July 1st this year. But some of their districts that have, will go live, one is a K-8 district and one is a non-operating district, and we have both a K-8 and a non-operating district within our district.
And they have a K-12 district.
They have a K-12 as well.
So, then, you can technically consolidate all three of those in, and you'd have still five districts.
Technically, yes.
And there, there's not so much voting if it's now part of the statewide plan either. Here's the statewide plan, we're going to discuss what's going to happen here, but there's not voting anymore, or, you know, opting in, opting out. It's going to be, here's what you're going to do, discuss how it's going to work and get it done.
Correct. The power of the reorganization of supervisory union...
Has always...
Has always been in the statute, and that is part of the statewide plan.
Right.
And it lies with the State Board of Education.
Correct.
The plan will be drawn by the agency, but the final decision is made, as it always has been, the authority's always been with the State Board on that.
And correct me if I'm mistaken, but the six-figure savings, was that ever a more precise amount other than six figures, because there's a big difference between 900,000 and 100,000?
So, in the report that Dr. French did, he mentioned that in past supervisory union mergers, six-figure savings had been able to be identified, but that is as far as that detail went. And in our conversation with the secretary, money was not the driving conversation.
Well, we couldn't have that conversation about it, because they had not read that report yet.
Right.
So, that didn't even enter the conversation.
It wasn't there. So, that's one highlight. Another highlight is that we got our integrated field review report on the tent. Jesse Roy from the state of Vermont came down, he's one of the project managers for the integrated field review, and he shared the report, which I shared with all of you, eight pages, on some recommendations and commendations for our WCSU. And our leadership team received that information, and we are now working to take the highlights from the integrated field review and the highlights from the DMG report, and kind of look for the overlap to help guide us in our work towards our continuous improvement plans. And so, that's what we're working on right now. But, you know, some of the highlights from the IFR are very similar to the highlights from the district management group report, which are that research and evidence will show that the, one of the best investments that we can make in a school system is the high capacity of our classroom teachers in order to deliver high-quality instruction and to run classrooms in a social and emotional structured, safe environment, and that the system itself can create structures in place to ensure wraparound services so that high-quality instruction can occur within those systems. So, a lot of it felt like some common sense, but it was really nice to have an outside, different outside groups coming and saying some similar things, so that really makes it nice for our leadership team to really think about the work we want to do, and for the boards to consider the work that they want to focus on. The DMG report was released the week prior to going to see Secretary Holcomb, and the week prior to when we got the integrated field review. And we were able to bring up our Director of Curriculum, our Director of Special Education, myself, and your chair, Mr. Winrin, along with the other nine supervisory unions that were part of the district management group study. We heard our presentation that was then repeated to both the, I believe, the Senate Ed Committee and the House Ed Committee, is that correct? And again, the lessons learned are very similar to the things we heard from the integrated field review of, these are the high-leverage points that we can invest in our systems in order to ensure progress towards a world-class education for our students. So, that, again, was very illuminating, but gives us some real focal points, which was very nice.
In the DMG report, it was mentioned there, some things about continuous improvement. And I'm wondering just what your sense is on continuous improvement? Because for me, continuous improvement is more than compliance, more than filling out some forms, it's a lot more of a philosophy of understanding, a philosophy of continual improvement, not just getting through the latest new thing, innovation, and then we can breathe again, but even if we've had a stellar year, so what are we going to do to improve next year? And I'm wondering what you see as, in the supervisory union, for this feeling of continuous improvement?
Well, I think that it's structured through what we've been provided in our continuous improvement plan structure, which is new under ESSF. And it is a, it's a, it's a new mindset and mentality that we are embarking on. I see great passion for not only personal improvement of skills and capacity of principals as instructional leaders and teachers as deliverers of high-quality instruction, but superintendents as understanding systems and structures and putting things in place. It's really, you know, kind of the cornerstone to our work. So, I see that it fits in naturally with the people that we've hired over the last few years, and the people that have been in place that have a lot of wisdom and want to deliver the best results they can for the community.
So, you, do you feel like it's kind of a new idea, a newer idea?
Well, I wouldn't say it's a new idea, I would say that we now have structures in place that are continually supporting that work.
That weren't there before.
Yeah, the structures were not there before, and so, I think it plays into people's desire for improvement and delivery of results, but I think that energy has always been there.
All right. Just a couple of comments. One is, one, I'm going to add a question, I just wanted, you asked about the testimony to the Senate and the House Education Committees. The House Education Committee is taking on the special ed conversation. We're looking at it now, we're taking testimony all the time. I mean, they did both, present to both committees, but the Senate has asked the House, or the Houses has asked the Senate to allow us to be the ones to take on the special ed portion of this, so stay tuned, we're working on it real hard.
Well, so, to follow up on what Emily's talking about too, is there was a big study done by the University of Vermont, which is going to kind of dovetail with the DMG study, and...
They were both included in, I think it was Act 48 of 2016, both those studies.
And that's, that's a deep, that's all on the Agency of Education website, it's 100 and...
Forty-eight pages or something like that.
When we were there the last time, they were referring to it, talking about it. I have some other things, I guess, to add about the DMG. And I was really happy to see the emphasis on the struggling students. I guess my own opinion is that this is a real, really a glaring issue in Vermont, because we have the haves and the have-nots, and how they achieve, and there's a gap. And that there's a gap is one thing, but Vermont isn't closing that gap. Not only is the gap not closed, they're not making any progress getting it closed, it's staying right at the same place. Rebecca Holcomb was talking about that, I think, at the last state board meeting, I can't remember, or it wasn't at the meeting, the other meeting we attended, that one was it, when she was talking about it. And that concerns me a whole lot, because I was having a conversation with someone up at the state level that I'm not going to name, but that person said too, that if there's any state in the union who should be able to close that gap, it is Vermont. With the teeny-tiny classroom sizes they have, but we're not making one bit of progress. We just have to admit, that gap is staying right like it is. And it's not that it can't change, because there are schools who are changing it, there in, some in Vermont, some elsewhere. So, I'm really concerned about that. I think that the teachers in Vermont are as hardworking as teachers anywhere, but I think they have to have the training to be able to do this. And that's not any great news, but I felt when I read through the report, that it had glimmering, some glimmerings of hope, that it had some hints of best practice, but I felt a certain awkwardness and cumbersome elements about it. It's one thing to talk about policy, what we're going to do overall, but from my background and my opinion, someday, somewhere, we have to get down to the point where teachers have the training... where teachers have the training to know what they're going to do with two or three kids in front of them who really need some help, for instance, in reading. And what do you do today when you walk in there? It's not a philosophy. It's not, well, we talk it over amongst ourselves. It's, we have to have the training to know what to do with those kids. And that's, that's a really important thing to me. It's, it's part of my background and that's not my role now. And I haven't been talking with teachers about it or principals or quizzing people as to what's going on. I don't know, maybe some of it's going on now. But it does give me a foundation to ask some questions. And another reason I'm really concerned about it is that I've done some volunteering at the prison in Springfield. And it's not an encouraging picture. These are by and large men who have been educated in Vermont and they can't read. A lot of them cannot read. That's a contributing factor as to why they're there. So I worked with a teacher, John, who is a real saint in his patience in trying to get them through high school or GED or something. But it's almost painful, a strain to watch him hand-feed information because they're not reading. So, you know, a lot of it's verbal, a lot of it's... And I guess what I'm not sensing is a sense of urgency. Is there a sense of urgency? Long time ago, when I was first involved in school improvement, we studied Larry Lazott, and maybe some of you know who he is, really a big player in the early school improvement. And he made a statement saying that any time educating all the kids is important to us, we can do it. So I'm, I'm a big supporter of teachers. I don't want to blame teachers because teachers need the training and the resources to do what they need to do. But this idea that we can't even begin to make some small gains in closing that gap in Vermont bothers me. I'll have to say that.
Well, I would just say I'm glad you're on the board because we're going to have opportunities to have some serious conversations about what it is this board wants to set for goals and accomplish for the citizens and the students. You guys are now going to be responsible for 600 students. And we do have research and evidence that shows where we can have the highest leverage investments. And we will be sharing that information with you. And then you guys will have to be challenging the administration to come up with some structures and plans that can deliver upon those things. And I would agree, it's going to probably look different than what we currently look like if we want to deliver some different results. You know, many of those things that you talked about are confirmed in both reports where investing in the capacity of the classroom teacher and making sure that not only do they have the training, but do they operate within a structure? And do they have the supports for continuous improvement in order to deliver upon the results? One of the interesting things we heard from the DMG report was, this is the 29th state that DMG has worked with. And the common element, anecdotally, that they have found in the successful schools across all 29 states is what they've termed the moral indignation of the instructional leader of the building. So if the principal has a moral indignation that where we are right now is not okay, that is a common element of change that occurs. And the world has changed. I mean, I, I think that I agree with your sentiment that everybody in our system is working really, really hard. But the world has changed around us. Students are coming to us different than they did five years, 10 years ago. And so we need to upskill our system and the people that work within our system in order to have different results. So I am excited that you are diving deep into these things.
Just one more comment and I'm done. And that is, I think that all the emphasis on the specialist is a dead end because we cannot afford all the specialists it's going to take if they're going to be the ones who work with the kids. Plus, there are school systems and districts that have shown us that a lot of that can be taken care of in the regular classroom if that teacher has the right training.
Well, and I would say that again, the DMG report says that exact thing, that 80% to 85% of a highly-trained first instructor will take care of 80 to 85% of most things. And then that 15 to 20%, you need to have a very highly-skilled interventionist that is very tailored to the needs of the students. And those need to work in simpatico. I mean, they got to be complimentary. And I think that's the goal. That has been laid out for us, and now it's up to us to build a system that supports that. It's an exciting time.
Yeah.
Can I just respond briefly? Thank you. I agree with everything Bill just said about your interest in this, and I'm thrilled you're here too. You mentioned that you didn't, you were concerned because you didn't think there was an urgency, but I see it quite differently. And I'm speaking now as the person who's sitting on that committee who's talking about this. And this, I'm in my fourth year on the House Ed Committee. And special ed has been really high as a red flag for us. And you have to look at something, which is why in 2016 we passed that law saying we need these studies. Some of the challenges around it have been around our focus on trying to change our governance structure. So, you know, it's hard to do so many parallel things in the state of Vermont right now in our school systems. And we hear constantly how much of a drag it is when we continue to ask for change. So we're mindful of that, but the urgency is absolutely there. So I'll just say one other thing. The, the two reports, they do work quite well, have quite similar suggestions and responses. But the UVM study is very focused on our funding system and how we finance and how we, how we actually process the system. And right now, we're in a reimbursement model. And so, so as Bill can very eloquently speak to, every moment of the day when a teacher or para is connected to a student in any way, they have to monitor, they have to, what's the term you guys use?
They have to time.
Yeah, there's a word, but you have to link them and you have to, it's all done in reports. It's phenomenal reports, reporting system to, to be able to capture what every dollar, every dollar that is spent. The UVM study is suggesting that we move to what we call a census block model, which would take that part, the reimbursement piece out of it, and would allow for much more flexibility for the classroom teacher to be able to work with those students without having to monitor every moment and every dollar that is spent. So I see great encouragement coming out of that. I think that will really help. I totally agree. And I think the reports, both of them, say that we need to move away from taking children out of the classroom for specialized instruction. And what we've been told very clearly is when students are removed from the classroom for, for help in reading or math, they're missing their core class.
Sure.
And that doesn't work, and it will never work. But I do really believe there is an urgency, and I think we will see a change coming. And I'm hoping that you and, and the administration and the teachers all stay involved as we have this conversation because it needs to work for everyone.
I hope that's true. I hope there's a growing urgency. We've been in Vermont for 15 years now, and I'll have to say mostly what I've heard is Vermont's doing such a great, wonderful job. And we don't have to worry. We're doing fine.
Well, you're going to get many opportunities to dig deep. So we'll keep you involved. I very much appreciate the question.
Yeah. And I think that when really great things happen, we should celebrate it. That's not what I'm saying. But this stubborn gap is something I think we should be really, really concerned about.
I mean, I think that we have to look at our full system. We ask a lot of our teachers. When we are, when we increase the rigor of the, the common core and the next-generation science standards, and we are looking at proficiency and looking at personalized learning, and then we ask a teacher to do that over multiple grades, that is really challenging work. And so part of it is how we've decided to structure ourselves with the changing demands of what is necessary for a student to learn for the 21st century. So we're going to have an opportunity to look at all that. And I'm going to count on the board to ask the hard questions and to challenge us to deliver upon not only a structure and a plan, but then to hold us accountable for the results. And if we, if we aren't doing what we're supposed to be doing, then you will get the opportunity to replace us.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Best thing you said in this whole piece is where you talk about, you know, we, there's a lot of information here for us as we start with an absolutely blank slate creating a new district. And we were told here, here are some things that we should pay attention to. And, you know, you're, we just, we just need to look at the research, look at what's there and put together, and, you know, work with you to put together the plan to take care of this. I mean, we have, we have never had a better opportunity to address that gap because the structure is absolutely different.
Absolutely.
Nobody's ever looked at, you know, pre-K-12 education as a whole thing. I mean, obviously, superintendents have, but from the board level down now, it all looks, the whole district is not focused on that. We have, we have the resources.
We have very, very generous communities.
We have the opportunity to change things around and, and address these issues. And, you know, as we move forward with this, starting in the, you know, with absolutely, you know, blank piece of paper, how are we going to look and how are we going to deal with these issues? You know, this, this is, this is, it's perfect timing for us as we create a new district. Here's, here's our focus, folks. Here's what we need. Here's what we need to do.
What frightens me is I talked to a principal not in this supervisory union, fortunately, not too long ago, who doesn't feel that it can happen. We can't close the gap. Because the, the kids normally who aren't achieving are coming from families with very entrenched problems. So it just can't be done.
I would say, I would say that it needs to happen in tandem with supports for families.
Supports for what?
Families. Across the board, and that's the challenge that every, it's not just Vermont is having this challenge.
Whenever it can be done with the support of the family, fine. But I would say that there are many, many times that it has to be done even when you don't hit the support from the family.
No, not support from the family.
Pardon me?
Support for the family.
For the families.
There has to be...
Some support for the family, yeah.
Families are struggling.
But I don't think we sit and wait until we get that. We have to work with the kids in front of us.
No, we're definitely not going to wait. We're going to focus on what we can control.
Right.
And we're going to challenge ourselves to look at what we're currently doing and see if there's a better way to do it.
To be, I mean, it's really important to understand that we are spending a lot more money than most of our neighboring states on special education. And that is being noticed in the report, reports. And when we talk about, Bill just mentioned about the generous resources we have, we do, our communities have been very supportive of this, but statewide, we are spending a lot of money. We are going to have to find a better way to do this so that we can reduce those costs or they're going to be taken away.
That was just on Vermont Week or something, and it would talk about identifying emotionally disturbed children and how high that identification is in Vermont.
Extreme that.
And there's a reason for that. It's not that Vermont has more emotionally disturbed children than anyone else. It's just easier to get help if they can be identified as emotionally disturbed. So a lot of them then are identified, so.
So read the UVM study if you haven't.
Yeah.
Because that addresses that, you know, quite clearly.
All right. Anything else on that, folks? Phil?
Oh, no, I'm looking for candy.
They're going all over the place.
Candy.
Drew wants one too. You got any more of these?
They're heading down.
So that, that, it was a really busy last couple of weeks. A lot of really good stuff. I will just end with Rob Evans, who's our safety liaison through the Agency of Education. Worked with our leadership team for a three-hour planning session to develop a 12 to 18-month plan within the buildings. And it was extremely helpful to get everybody on the same page and to be able to kind of walk through what we're going to be doing over the next 12 to 18 months. We've found a little bit of money to be able to stipend the Dena students here at Leland and Gray, who has been very proactive in safety concerns, to kind of be our point person for the supervisory union, to assist our principals with making sure that our emergency plans are organized, up-to-date, communicated. We have some training scheduled for the summer, and the resources from the Vermont School Safety Center have been outstanding. Every single school has been audited. We've met with the leadership team. We're planning for the future. It's, it's a resource that more schools should take advantage of. It's been really fantastic. So those are my highlights.
It's a lot of highlights.
Well, it's a busy time, man.
Yeah. Any more discussion on the DMG report?
I would just say that I'm working with the cabinet of Special Ed, Finance, and Director of Curriculum to break it down to about a two or three-page highlight of looking at, we did curriculum audits at all the buildings. We did the DMG report. We've got the integrated field review. So kind of looking at all three of those and triangulating, what are our priorities and how are we going to make the best leveraged investments? And then put those into our continuous improvement plans and put them before the boards to approve, adopt, edit, give us suggestions. But we're trying to use that information, not just based on our feelings, but what is the evidence? What does the research say? That these are the things we need to dive into. So that's the work that we're going to be doing this spring.
Is there still, is there still discussion with DMG group about getting them to actually figure out a way to make it cost-effective for them to come and give their report to other groups around the state?
So after, there, there is going to be a possibility of a cohort that is going to kind of take those plans and run them through with consultation of DMG. And so we'll be looking out for that opportunity. We could have done that two months ago. We weren't ready for that. We didn't have the information. We weren't prepared. That was more for people that had gone through the Act 46 process right at the beginning. But there will be another opportunity, and we'll definitely be bringing that to the board's attention.
Okay. Moving along, we, we still haven't figured out a time to go kind of revisit, and this ties in a little bit with the communications thing. The July and August sort of discuss where we are in our work and, you know, what's our, what are our next steps to move forward? You know, we had, we hadn't picked dates. I know VSBA is, is booked like all of July and August, right? So we can't have VSBA come down and, and run another retreat with us?
They're, they're booked this spring. The July and August was to see if you wanted to have them come back down.
Oh, okay.
This spring, they're very, very busy. But I do have...
Okay.
An alternative for you guys.
Right. I knew. So it's, it's hard to schedule this, you know, really ahead, but if we don't look at some dates now, we end up looking at them in May or June and going, yeah, busy, gone, vacation, whatever. You know, anything in July or August where people know they're not going to be around? So we can just arbitrarily pick a date? And is one month better than the other for people?
July is always better for me.
I mean, you care about me or not?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Deeply, Bill.
Okay. So Bill will, is not available until the, until July 12th.
Okay.
How about the week after?
So the week of July 16th through July 20th?
And August starts getting very, very busy with school stuff.
Yeah, I would say the last two weeks in July.
So I'd love the last two weeks in July.
July 16th to 20th, that's the third week in July. How's that?
16th is our board meeting.
16th is our board meeting. We're talking about another, like, maybe four hour? Is four hours enough? Do we need a two-night, six, three hours a night session?
It depends on what you do this spring. But I would definitely make, I would, I mean... But I would definitely make, I mean, I would err on the side of a day, but, I mean, I know it's a lot for me. If you're gonna do a day, I would do two, three-hour chunks.
Thoughts, Emily?
Well, I was just gonna say, sometimes in the past, we've taken a whole day and done it on a week, even. We've done them on Saturdays.
Yeah.
Or we've taken a day during the week if the board members are available.
Yeah, we've done weekdays in the summer. You know, if we just sort of pick a day in the week and say, you know, we're gonna do it on this day, and you've got enough notice, people willing to take time away from their, you know, their real jobs and show up. Looking for opinions here, folks. Drew, what do you think?
Could be kayak week.
Kayak week?
Yeah. I gotta spend a week paddling in the ocean or I get twitchy.
When is kayak week?
We need you out there.
I mean, we need, this would be one that we would want you at. So, do you know when kayak week is yet?
Not yet. Usually, it's the last week of July, first week of August.
So, this is the middle week of July, so we're early, if possible. What do you think, Ken? Alicia?
Sounds good, Matt.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we could just say, okay, July 19th. It's a Thursday. Thursdays are not horrible. You know, we can look into an off-site place and basically spend the entire day. You know, start at 10:00 in the morning and, or 9:00 in the morning and go till 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon.
Well, we could do afternoon, evening if people feel
We could do afternoon, evening if people think that's easier for them. You know.
You have a scheduled 16th. You could do the 16th and the 23rd and do like you did before and do five to eight or whatever, or six to nine. And do back, back. That allows people to still have a life, but lose those two nights.
Concerned about the week apart, honestly, because people go on vacation.
Is there preference for a whole day or two nights, folks?
I would say the chances of making it are better if it's one day versus trying to be two seconds.
That's kind of what I was thinking, just 16th, 23rd. I'm losing you on the 23rd.
Two separate weeks, we're gonna lose people.
That's great.
Yeah.
Twice a chance in paddling.
All right. How about July 19th in pencil?
Sounds good.
July 19th.
All right. See if VSB can do it, please, Bill, if you would.
I can.
And we'll find a place, and we'll actually feed you all lunch, you know.
Perfect. Could I add on to that?
Yeah, please.
So, part of your packet, you guys had kind of a breakdown of the work you guys had done with VSB. So, I asked our Director of Curriculum, whose doctorate is in organizational psychology and curriculum development, just to take a look. She had a really good time, enjoyed watching seven hours of your consecutive board meetings in October.
Oh, wow.
And then broke down what you guys had done, because I think this is what you were looking for at the end of the work with the VSB, was something like this. And so, I asked her to do this so that you guys had a baseline of the work you had done. And then, you also communicated your desire to take that work and lead that into really crafting a vision and mission and goals so that then you could take those and communicate with the community to find out if those things matched. Did you need to edit them? Do you need to change them? Were you not hearing the community? You guys are representing the community. And if we could do that work this spring, that would then lead into what Nancy and Patty were talking about with communicating the work that you guys are doing as a board, but also get you to that point a year before you're starting of, here's our vision, here's our mission, here are the goals that we want to accomplish. You guys have discussed them. You guys feel comfortable with them. You've had an opportunity to share them with the community. The community has given you feedback. You guys have reflected on that. You've done some more work. And so, you come to that meeting in July where that work's done. And then, you're in July and you are building. Does that kind of make sense to you all?
Absolutely.
So, if that is something you are interested in, I would suggest, if you're willing, to allow me to ask our Director of Curriculum to facilitate, like, a good 90 minutes at your next meeting on the work you guys did towards creating your vision as a board so that that work can start beginning.
Well, I think it's, I think it's time to get started on that, the question of how we start. I mean, you know, I was looking through the communications study group, and, you know, they're talking about getting stakeholder input on the vision. I mean, if we're gonna get stakeholder input on the vision, we need to get going on that, get that, because if we're gonna be talking in July now, having the vision done and talking about how we actually implement that vision, under, we'd have to change this timeline some because, you know, having the stakeholder input by June 1, we're not gonna have a vision then by July 19.
You're gonna need to involve stakeholders.
We need to, we need to involve the stakeholders, like, now. We need to just start putting it out there that, you know, we're doing this. And I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure how we involve. I mean, some of the stakeholders are easy. Staff, faculty, principals, that kind of stuff, those, the administration. It's the community at large and the parents and everything else. I struggle with how we're gonna involve them in that. Unfortunately, it tends to be, we go down the road, hang on one second, here, we go down the road, we have it, and then they come to tell us we've done it wrong, rather than being involved from the ground up. You have a better, you have an idea?
I just had a question because I was feeling kind of this way with our board also. And we started putting feelers out for
Our board being?
Oh, for Brookline and the Brookline-New Fane Joint Board. The Brookline Board and the Brookline-New Fane Joint Board, I'm speaking for both, I believe, at the moment. When we had originally started talking about this merger, a lot of people spoke about advisories to the board in their schools. And I was curious if any of the other schools have moved on that because that would be a great way to incorporate the stakeholders, if they've had the advisory boards to this board in their schools already in place or if they're starting that.
I think those are sort of envisioned for after we start functioning as a board and, you know, we're in place. Right now, the individual school boards still exist and, you know, we can, the West River Board can talk to the New Brook Board or the Leland and Gray Board or the Wyndham Board or, you know, we can have conversations with those boards. Once those boards cease to exist, to continue to give some sort of feedback to us from the individual schools, we thought about putting those advisory boards in place, but not, like, right now, it would be, you know, sort of redundant because we already have a school board functioning in each one of those schools for another year and a half.
We were just looking at trying to touch out as a school board, reach out as a school board, sorry, to like the PTOs, to some of the community members and start to understand what they were looking for, for exactly what you're asking, is the advice on what the vision should be and what, where does the communities want this to go and making sure that they're incorporated and included in all of the discussions that we're having, even though they're invited all the time to these meetings?
Yeah, they're invited and, you know, you also run the, you also have the problem of you want a really broad community response, and a lot of times, you get a much narrower response.
So, nobody else has started on any of that outreach?
No.
No other boards? Okay.
So, I'm actually gonna be holding a meeting in Jamaica. I've asked our town moderator to come and try to get feedback for our town meeting. We've struggled getting candidates to come forward for board positions. So, I'm gonna be holding an open forum in Jamaica about what we're doing in hopes that we can generate some interest in
How far in advance?
Probably the first or second week. We're looking for a date that the town hall is open.
First or second week?
February.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm wondering because I'm like, hmm, is this, is this far enough in advance that we can steal this as an idea?
But we're just gonna have a, just a discussion with the public and see if anybody shows up.
Let me know when that is. I'd go just to see what happens and if we can borrow that model. You know, the more input, the better, you know, to get some ideas and come up with a vision. At the end of it all, you know, we're elected, we'll have to impose, you know, we'll have to kind of go with what we know from our constituents and put this together and move forward with it. But, you know, I certainly wanna hear as many opinions as I can.
When Patty and I met and talked about this, I guess we weren't assuming that by June 1, we would have a vision put together. We were envisioning by June 1, we would have input to start working on a vision. But it's sounding like you would like that moved up a bit.
Well, I think the advice that you guys received from the VSB was that it was important for the board to have a strategic vision statement. You didn't have to have a fully fleshed-out, but you needed to know where you guys all stood so that you could engage the public in a structured manner, you know, so that, so they had something to give feedback on.
Well, do you want then input from stakeholders before that time or after that time?
I think that's what you guys are discussing right now.
Yes.
I wouldn't mind hearing from, you know, people right now. Obviously, we talked about at great length, six-plus hours plus, you know, a number of conversations when we were discussing whether or not we would even merge, about what was important to us, what was, what we valued in each town, what we valued in schools. All of this has been, you know, laid out. We have minutes and lists and, you know, a lot of information here about what's important. Combine that with the data that we have from these, you know, well-timed studies, the DMG, and especially the DMG and the IFR. I think we can have a pretty good idea of, you know, what the communities value, what the individual boards valued, what some of the stakeholders, being principals and community and all of that, valued and saw as important. And we now have some ideas about where we're strong and where we're struggling. I think we, as a board, can start talking about, okay, what do we, going forward, what do we think? You know, and once we have what we think, then we have something to go out and say to the committee, well, here's what we think based on all this input we've already got and any more input anybody cares to give us. And we can solicit input on that. And it's almost like a two-stage process. And at some point, we say, okay, we've heard you, and here's what we're gonna do. And probably by sometime, it would be nice by, you know, in that July retreat, to be able to say, here's in a general position what we think we wanna do, and here we're gonna start fleshing it out. And, you know, that's the point at which we start saying, okay, what does the system look like? You know, start telling us what this looks like to actually do these things. And, you know, at that point, there may be questions from your team about, okay, you say this, but does that mean this or this? And how do, and this is how we think that looks. Is that what you were looking for, kind of thing? And that's probably gonna take several conversations.
If by mid-June, you guys simply had a vision that you felt like had been reflected and communicated through all your stakeholders, that would allow you to start building. If that's too soon, that's fine, but you need that before you can start asking the hard questions of where you're investing resources and, you know, but you've gotta get the people on board.
One thing Patty and I talked about, I'm sorry, Drew, go ahead.
The timeline, we have to follow because next year at this time, we have to put a budget together.
Absolutely.
So, if we're talking about not even designing our system until the end of summer, then how are we gonna have time to put a budget to this? We have to move things along a little quicker than what we're doing.
Yeah.
We've been kind of chilling here, doing a whole lot of nothing, a lot of meeting time, but we're not accomplishing anything. And the clock is ticking.
I don't agree with that. I think we're accomplishing stuff.
Well, the clock is ticking.
I agree with that.
We have a big job. It's not like a typical budget where you compare last year's, you go, oh, is it up or is it down? We're talking about all new.
Oh, no, we're talking about a brand-new budget.
And we're talking about completely redesigning education. We're talking about something that is, we have to renegotiate a contract from square one. We can't expect to start that in August and be ready for a, you know, September, October budget discussion. It's not realistic.
Well, I, we thought we could do it by this time, too. A really important thing when you think this through is what kind of questions do you ask the stakeholders to get the information you want? You keep it really simple. If it's more complex, then you need someone who is accustomed to doing surveys. So, to get the kind of information we want, what do we ask stakeholders? So, we can get information even to build our initial vision and then ask for feedback. So, what do we wanna ask? We just wrote down something that we had talked about in some of our meetings, asking what constituents thought a high school graduate should know and be able to do. That'd be a simple form. Or is there more information that we need to have to start working on a vision statement?
I actually think that that's more specific information than we need for what we initially need to do. You know, that's almost curriculum development-type stuff versus, you know, general vision. You know, we've got the, what is the community value? You know, we want, obviously, we want, you know, we want our children, starting in pre-K and going through high school, to, you know, move along that continuum and get top-notch education all the way there. We want to address those struggling, you know, struggling readers, the struggling math, we wanna deal with that in elementary school. You know, investment, it looks like investment earlier is key, and, you know, highly-trained teachers are key. But those things are further down the road from a vision. This is more like we value, you know, the ability of every kid to be, like, not so much a high school graduate can do, but, you know, they need to think critically and solve problems and be socially and emotionally healthy and interact well with each other and things like that. But, you know, that's, I want them to be able to do that at every stage of the game.
I think that's, that's included in here when we wrote this. That's what we were thinking.
And I don't think we need to ask stakeholders those questions. Do we want them to do this? I mean, obviously, we know that we want them to do that.
So, what do we ask?
We're looking for a vision statement on what the community, the schools, and the administration want this board, this district, to do. So, I think we just need pretty much, I mean, we could start with three key points, and that would simplify it for us on just, you know, our goals as a board are to unify these schools or provide, you know, a path for, these three points that we as a board are going to target and build it from there. But I think you're right, we need to, I think some of us are looking for like, okay, let's hit tangible, boom, boom, boom. What, like you're saying, what are the questions that we need to ask or do we need this survey, that survey? If we can, I feel like I need a piece of paper. All right, here's what we're seeing. Does that make, does that help? I mean, if we, if we come, can we choose three points of interest that we're gonna start to thrush out now or do we, or that we're gonna ask people about? What we want this board to look like is pretty much, or what we want this board to accomplish and be focused on is pretty much our goal for our vision statement? Or am I being incorrect in that? The vision statement? I lost Bill.
No, I'm just saying.
I was too wordy.
So, I think you guys need to create a vision statement.
Yeah, which is basically what we are going to do as a board, correct?
Yeah.
Not what each school is gonna do, not what the good budget's gonna do.
This is a fundamental responsibility of the board.
It could be something as simple as a high-quality education at a price the taxpayers can swallow. To be honest with you. It can be that simple to start with if you have to have one, and you can build on it year from year.
No, I mean
I'm not saying that that would be it, but I'm just saying, you know, if you have to have one, that can be it. And then, you know, continuing growth in, you know, keeping up with the newer technologies, the newer, you know, because, let's be honest, I don't see too many people at this table that have been in high school recently. I mean, other than to come here to these meetings. And high school's changed an awful lot since we were in high school. Kids, wake up.
So, might I make a
Okay. I think that you guys have done a lot of work with the, with the six hours you did with VSB, with being members of boards, with going through the RED process, with going through individual board processes, with going through the Act 46 through individual board processes, with going through the Act 46 Study Committee. Please, would you allow me to ask the member of my team that has the most experience, experience in leadership in helping groups of people to create a vision statement, to make a very concrete suggestion about how this board could do that? And then let me communicate that in between meetings through the chair to see what kind of structure would be necessary to do that.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I think we need that.
Okay? So I have Nancy's thing, I have the recap of what you guys did, and I will then consult with my person to give a very specific, concrete recommendation of what is necessary to get you to where you want to go. Then we can move forward from there.
You meet with your people, get back to us and our people, and then we'll all come together and be one happy group.
Would you like time for your people to talk about that on the next agenda?
It will definitely be happening on the next agenda. I just don't know at to what level and to what depth. It could be anywhere from Joe and I talk in between, and it's recommended that we have this chunk of time to do something, or that we need a larger block of time. I'm not going to presuppose anything.
Do we need a motion for this?
We can take care of it.
We'll get back to you at the next meeting with either people or just ideas, by email before.
Awesome. Thank you.
We have the resource, let's use it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Team, man.
Okay. Does that cover old business?
I think it does.
I think it does. Okay. So there is no policy, because we've done that all. Thank you, Ken, for now. So consent agenda, did, does everybody have those minutes? I know Meg posted them. I don't think I emailed them to anybody after Patty did them.
I thought she did. Did she?
Did Patty email them to you all?
No.
No?
I thought Meg did.
Meg did?
I thought I took them.
They're on the site, though. They're posted on the site.
Well, if you guys haven't read them, we can... Yeah, have we read the minutes? Or do we need to push them back?
Well, nobody else even looked at them. I'm not even going to make a motion.
Yeah, I was waiting. Let's read them and...
Okay, we'll push the consent agenda off to next meeting and put those minutes under there.
Now we have a minute taker, Aaron.
Yes. So, okay, any other business? Anything else?
Nope.
Our next meeting is February 19th here, and then our annual meeting is April 3rd.
It's April 3rd, so we'll talk about that.
We'll talk about that running at the next meeting, probably, or the meeting after.
We will have, or I'll probably have a warning for you.
All right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved in second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done. Thank you.